As you can see, we have Ms. Carlson is gone. She left me great notes, so hopefully today's meeting goes well. So I'm going to welcome everybody to the May 6, 2024 City Council Meeting. A few notes, we still have, we still have some staff and members of the public joining us by Zoom, so we'll be toggling back and forth, even if council members and some staff are still here in person. Reminder, as always, we take a brief break approximately every ninety to one hundred and twenty minutes between items. With that, we've got every meeting with an open comment period. I'll give you some of our guidelines for the open comment period. This is an opportunity for anyone from this public to speak on items that will be not taking, we will not be taking public testimony during a public hearing later on the agenda. Each person has up to two minutes to speak for a total of twenty minutes. I will keep track of time through a couple of different methods, clock and the stoplight. So please note, if I need to cut you off because of the time, limited time, we want to make sure everybody has an opportunity to speak. And as always, on that note, I request that each speaker be very concise to allow for more people to speak during the designated time. And please note that with so many speakers, we request that you build upon and not repeat previous comments to be respectful to others. I will use a list that was given to me by the city clerk. If you have any materials you want to share with the council, you may give them to the city clerk over there. Your comments should be directed towards me as the acting council president. While you, we welcome your comments and concerns about issues affecting the city, we ask that you participate calmly and respectfully. We do not tolerate disruptive behavior. Participants are further encouraged to limit comments generally to topics that are within the scope and jurisdiction of the council's ability to affect policy. Also, members and staff, do not respond to your comments during the public comment, but will instead follow up and any requests separately. You'll be invited to speak in order as signed up. Please state your name clearly and make sure the clerk has the information you need to follow up. And we have, let's see, our first person would be Sean Kettling.
I'm going to speak a little bit about Silver Lake Park. Rochester, Minnesota is notorious for flooding. The nineteen seventy-eight flood is the only major one within living memory. People were killed, but nineteen seventy-eight is a lifetime ago for people who can't imagine the destruction. There were major floods in nineteen oh eight, the nineteen forties, nineteen fifty-one, and so it goes. In the nineteen nineties, multi-millions of dollars were spent by the federal government with the Army Corps Engineers flood-controlling Rochester. The dams were a major part of that project. Besides making the rivers three times wider, three times deeper, concrete walls spill waste, making it such that Rochester proper won't flood again. Dams, though, were installed at Haverhill on Silver Creek. There's dams on the Bear Creek, the Zumbro River next to the Soldier's Field Golf Course, Apache Mall, and Mayo Wood and beyond. But the dam at Silver Lake is the only one with floodgates to help regulate the floodwater. And to remove it, remove it is to put us in peril of flooding our water sewage treatment plant. And that's just blocks north of the dam. And so what I am here to say is we want to save the dam and save Silver Lake Park the way it is. And if you have any questions, I'd love to answer them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on our list is Mr. Ed Cohen.
Right here. Over here.
Good evening, council and mayor. My name is Edward Cohen, and I'm here representing the legal women voters. We had a table at Saturday's Earth Fest, and it was an effort to gain ideas on how people feel our tax money should be spent in the areas of sustainability. The theme was "Give Us Your Two Cents Worth." We asked people to put yourself in a position of being a council member who has to make those real decisions. And we had four categories, and in each category, there were three choices, and people were each given two cents to use in each of those four categories. And I'd like to pass it on to Amy to take it from there.
We had a lot of people that wanted to give you advice. You did great. And you and the county board. And I hope they're passing out the papers now, okay, of what the answers. Oh, you've got them. Okay, you can see in transportation, the, nobody, none of the topics got less than eighty. But the big winner in transportation was improved public transit, although electric city and county vehicles and more EV chargers and bike storage also were represented. Under buildings, the winner on that one was solar panels on public buildings, one hundred fifty-six. And I realize that can't happen in the city until we're out of Sumpo, but something to look forward to after 2030. But free home energy inspection and advice and RPU rebates was also represented, as was incentivizing developers to exceed the building code and to try to go electric. And I understand you're certainly doing that with city buildings. Under waste management, curbside composting was the one that got the most with one hundred fifty-two, but also solar garden at the landfill and to eliminate multiple waste haulers in neighborhoods. And in fact, my husband did not follow the rules. He was supposed to put his two cents in each category, but that was one he cares about enough that he put, he cheated, he put all eight cents in that one. Under land use, nudging residents away from the standard lawn, one sixty-five. And you know that we, last year, the legislature passed that lawns to legumes so that it'll be a legal thing to do. And that was the most popular thing. One hundred sixty-five people voted for that. One hundred sixty-five pennies were in that one. And increased housing density and cover crops on farms were also. So we wanted, we told people as they were voting their pennies and agonizing where to put them, that we were going to pass on the information to you. So I'm glad that we had a chance to pass this on. This was on Saturday.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next on my list, I have Wes Lund. I combined them both together. It only did three minutes total.
Okay. You can read my mind, Sean.
Thank you.
I don't know if you want to, though. Probably put my head in the guillotine. I wanted to talk a little bit. I brought some notes for once because I want to make sure I don't leave anything out. My name's Wes Lund, and I've offered a $1,000 reward for information leading to the identification of the individual who put the N-word on the bridge in Rochester. That, that N-word was a dog whistle for all kinds of political activities in Rochester under the title of racism in Rochester involving the NAACP, Mayor Norton, DFL candidates for several levels of office, school board members and candidates, city council members and candidates, Chief Jim Franklin's office was representative, Sheriff Torgerson's office, Dr. Peckel, CIA background, CERT team was on hand, Isaiah Minnesota, Olivia Bergen, all kinds of people. But I'm offering $1,000 to actually lead to the identification of the one individual, or maybe there were two or three. I'm offering that, that's my own money. Contrast that with, you know, multiple events at public schools, sort of milking that word for all it's worth. It's a magic word. It's a dog whistle. I want to know who did it. Because they cast aspersions on our whole community by saying, oh, it's racism in Rochester. Meanwhile, about a week later, Yami Bear ended up beaten to within an inch of his life in ICU, put in the hospital. Crickets, radio silence, doesn't fit the narrative. It was black-on-black violence. I want to move on to transparency for city staff. When the staff goes behind the backs of our people, we shouldn't have that. And the Silver Lake issue was a case where we were told that city staff went to representatives to talk about, I'm out of time.
Thank you, Mr. Lund.
You know what I was going to say.
Thank you, Mr. Lund. So that's all I have on our list for tonight. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak for two minutes? Your last chance. Seeing none, we'll close our open comment period, and we'll go to the clerk to call the order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Keen.
Here.
Councilmember Bransford.
Here.
Councilmember Wall.
Here.
Councilmember Kirkpatrick.
Here.
Councilmember Dennis.
Here.
Council President Carlson is absent. Acting Council President Palmer.
Present.
Mayor Norton.
Present.
Thank you very much. And then next on our list is the City Administrator's Report. Administrator Zellens, please go ahead with your report.
Thank you, Acting Council President, Mayor, members of the public, city council. We start this report each Monday with our customer service principals and thanking our teammates for acting with respect, integrity, safety, and excellence. And I also, this month, want to recognize Public Service Recognition Week. That is this week. So thank you to our council members, to our volunteers, and to our teammates for having the dedicated public service that they have in whatever way that they are committed to doing so with the city, whether that is as an employee or whether that's as a volunteer. Appreciate the work that they do to deliver for the community. Also, want to recognize that May is Mental Health Awareness Month, so making sure to take time to fight the stigma around mental health and seeking assistance if needed. We always recommend that to our teammates. We have a lot of well-being programs thanks to the council and your commitment to making sure that they're well. Also, want to let folks know that on May eighth, from six thirty to seven thirty, there is a composting informational session at the Rochester Public Library that is open to all ages, but focused really on adults. So that's Wednesday, May eighth, at the auditorium of the library, six thirty PM. And then later in the week, on May eleventh, Saturday, eleven AM to one PM, the Rochester area handbells, you maybe wouldn't think of this happening at a library, but they're going to use their inside handbell voice, I guess. And that will also be at the auditorium of the Rochester Public Library to experience their music. Also, want to recognize later this month that we do have Rochester Pride happening on May eighteenth. That's at Soldiers Memorial Field Park from noon to five PM. Free entry, so folks are encouraged to attend that. We will have some city booths there as well. And then finally, it's No Mow May. I know many people really appreciate this. I do admit, I've already mowed at my house, and it took three batteries. So just remember when you no-mow, the mowing will be a lot at the end. But this is the fifth year that the city has participated in this. And we do want to encourage pollinator health, and we also do that in particular city parks. So this year, it's Meadow Park, Valley Side Estates, Greystone Park, Bailey Meadows, Cassidy Ridge, Glendale Hills Park, North Park, and Rolling Green Park. And that's all I have for this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Zellens. Next on our agenda is the mayor's report.
Thank you. I've got a couple of things today. One is, I've, I do Move with the Mayor twice a year, and May is Move with the Mayor Month. So here are a couple of the activities that we are cosponsoring with other organizations in town. There are many others that are on the website, but Everyday Balance at One Twenty Five Live, there's a Community Wellness Symposium and Gala that Rochester Clinic, I guess, and the Lotus Foundation are hosting. This is, I think their fifth or sixth year they've been doing that. May eighteenth is the Med City Marathon, and I'll be participating, running with the kindergarteners at the end of that. That's my speed. May nineteenth, there'll be an event at Detour Athletics. They're sponsoring this year's Move with the Mayor, and they're doing a fitness for all, and they'll have speakers about mental health, because we know that exercise is not only good for us physically, but also for our mental health. We'll have some speakers from Mayo Clinic, and there's a nurse that'll be speaking, and there'll be activities for kids and all sorts of stuff there. May twentieth is a proclamation for Heart Health Day with Mayo Clinic. That'll be in our rotunda outside of city, in the city hall rotunda. And then May twenty-sixth, I'm hosting a Walk with the Mayor with the Rochester Women's Magazine. So those are just a couple of the events. I encourage you all to participate. There are forms you can download online, and then fill them out, and turn them in at the end of the month if you so choose, and we'll have drawings for prizes like we do every year. One of the other things that's during the same time is Love My Neighbor Week or Heart My Neighbor Week, whichever you want to call it, that the, our neighbors is hosting, and we are encouraging one of those activities that you do that week is knock on a neighbor's door and take a walk, so we can, you know, be healthy at the same time. But it really is about growing that sense of community, neighborhood by neighborhood across the city on that week specifically. The Register Vision RV 2050 is going well. This is just one of the symbols that we use to talk about all the different areas we hope the community will think about when they give us their suggestions throughout the summer and fall about what, what they hope for this community moving ahead. The Steering Committee and the Visioning in Action, Vision in Action Team have been fabulous and have been meeting, and we're getting lots of good advice and input from them. There is a German delegation that will be coming to Rochester, June sixth through eighth, and then a different part of that same delegation, the twelfth through the thirteenth. And this is part of the Climate Smart Municipalities program that the University of Minnesota sponsors. And Rochester was the recipient of one of the, was selected as one of the grantees about six or seven years ago now, prior to me being mayor. Senator Senjum and I were involved with this group for a long time and have really enjoyed working and learning from them. And then they come here and learn from us. So they will be here, and there'll be a variety of activities going on those days. And very grateful to the city staff for stepping up. Cindy Steinhouser and our new sustainability coordinator, Kayla, is involved, and really appreciate them stepping up and helping us provide a really robust couple of days for these folks from Munster, Germany, our sister city for climate, but also all the others as well. And there'll be some student interns that are from across the state that'll be coming as well. So it should be fun. This morning, we had a meeting to discuss gap funding for homelessness. A couple of the city council members were there and some staff. It was a really robust meeting with a lot of the nonprofits and business community. And there'll be, I hope, a community-wide effort to provide funding and support for filling that gap and assuring that we have a place for every single person to put their head at night here in Rochester by continuing to provide funding and support for the overflow shelter, which wasn't just needed in the winter, but is needed year-round in the summer as well. And we're finding that it's full. I think they said around twelve to twenty. When the other one is full, twelve to twenty are going over to this Salvation Army site. And so we're going to really work together as a team and provide funding for that. Just a couple designations to mention. It's Historic Preservation Month. We've been working on this issue a lot. It's also Building Safety Week, the eighth through the fourteenth, and Night for Fallen Firefighters, May sixth and seventh. So I wanted to point those events out to you and encourage you to thank those who deserve thanking and support and honor those folks who are recognized by these days. Lastly, I think lastly, Board and Commissions, Music Board, Ward Three, Park Board, Ward Two, Planning and Zoning Commission has an opening now. Police Policy Oversight Commission has an opening as well. And we may need to have some discussion. I'll be talking with our attorney in the next few days. The county has sunset their Human Rights Commission, and our ordinance requires a placement from the county on the human rights, from the Human Rights Commission to serve on police policy oversight. So we will need to probably address our ordinance to decide how we want to manage that. And we'll come back to all of you for your suggestions and advice on that. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mayor. Next on our agenda is the Order of the Agenda. Are there any changes I missed or not yet heard? Otherwise, I invite a motion to approve the Order of the Agenda.
I'll move approval.
Okay. Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, sing five by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Motion carries. Consent Agenda, I have, I've heard nothing being polled, so I'd be looking for a motion to approve in block items F one through F thirty-one.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes. I would note that F seven, the cover page under Action Requested, has a mistake that makes it appear that there are two places that they're offering for the gambling permit, but it's really only one. It is Willow Creek Golf Course.
Thank you. We'll get that noted. Anything else, Mr. Keen?
Yeah, again, I just wanted to call out the volume of city business that is contained in the consent agenda this week. There's summer festivals coming up. There's a couple of public safety operation enhancements going out. There's bids going out. It's all, it is kind of a random collection of city business, but if anybody wants to spend a little time and see all the different things going on in the background, it is a good way to get a feel for what's going on in your city.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. All, all in favor of the block ends, F one through F thirty-one, sing five by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next on our agenda is public hearings. I'm going to read a bunch of stuff before our public hearings. Before we begin the public hearing, I'm going to clarify all the things that we do. Staff introductions or presentation. They'll do theirs first, and then the applicant, applicant rep will have up to ten minutes. Then we will open it up for a public hearing. After the public hearing's done, public comment, they have up to five minutes to go. We'll close the public hearing. The applicant will have his rebuttal or answer some of the questions. We'll invite the council members to ask, clarify questions of the applicant and staff. And then we'll have any discussion. We'll invite a motion to in a second, and then we'll have a discussion, and we'll vote. So on our first public hearing is G one, a major land subdivision, number CD twenty twenty-four dash zero zero two plat by Meyer Companies, to be known as Cassidy Farms First. Desmond, are you the person doing this for us?
Yes, Councilmember Palmer, I am the one that's going to present tonight.
Yours.
All right. Thank you, sir. Yes, this is Cassidy Farms First. This is a preliminary plat to subdivide a thirty-three acre parcel of land. The applicant is looking to subdivide the property into fifty-three residential properties and three outlots. This site is zoned R one for single-family residential. Generally, the lots will be about ninety feet wide, and this meets the width and area requirements of the UDC. This plat is part of the larger Cassidy Farms GDP development, which was approved in March of twenty twenty-three. That's all I have at this point, but I'd be happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Thank you. And does the applicant or representative of the applicant like to speak? Come on up. State your name, please.
My name is Andre Ringel. I am a civil engineer for WITSEF, and I'm here representing Paul Meyer with Meyer Companies. Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members, for your time in reviewing this application. And thank you to all the city staff, especially Desmond, for taking all of their time and helping us through this proposal. As Desmond mentioned, this is a pre-plat for Cassidy Farms. It was approved by the Planning Commission unanimously earlier or later last month. It is consistent with the approved GDP. Our client is okay with all of the six conditions that were set forth by the city staff. I ask for your support in this proposal, and I will be happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
You can have a seat, and we'll open up the public hearing. You can come back then. Thank you. We will now open up the public hearing. Is there anybody who would like to speak to this item? Does anybody like to speak to this item? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing, and the applicant can come up and answer questions. Does anybody from the city council, Mr. Keen?
Yeah, I just want to understand, again, this is a subdivision. There's a general, is this like, like phase three of a five-phase? Is this, is this owner just doing this one phase because that's what he owns?
So this is phase one of the Cassidy Farms GDP. At the current time, the owner does not have any plans to develop further portions of this development.
Okay, there's some things tied in, the conditions have to do with transportation. So, but the next, the connection going, I guess it'd be to the north and east, that road, is it planned to connect to Forty-Eighth Street, or where would it connect?
Yes, eventually it is planned to connect Forty-Eighth Street.
And that is laid out in the general development plan?
I do not know if the connection to Forty-Eighth Street is, but I know the connection to the road network to the north and east is laid out in the GDP.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions of the applicant? Seeing none, any questions of the staff?
You could have a seat.
Thank you.
Mr. Keen?
I would move adoption of a resolution approving the major land subdivision, CD two zero two four dash zero zero two plat by Meyer Companies, to be known as Cassidy Farms First, with six conditions for the subdivision of thirty-three point oh nine acres into fifty-three single-family residential lots and three outlots.
Second.
Thank you very much, Mr. Keen. For yours.
Well, again, I did a little work with the public works on this before. There's some kind of bothersome statements. It's in their, in their notes about things that are, like, there's insufficient city services in this area, which I think turns out to be common language when we, when we're doing a first subdivision, and we don't have the next ones planned out. So my, I did a little investigation, and I'm comfortable that this fits our, our standards.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, sing five by saying aye?
Aye.
You abstained? Okay. Thank you. G two is our next public hearing. This is the Capital Improvement Plan and Preliminary Approval to issues of capital improvement plan bonds for the downtown building energy transition project. I believe we have Mr. Anderson here.
Yes, thank you. Good evening. Tonight, we have a resolution approving the capital improvement plan and preliminary approval for the issuance of the capital improvement plan bonds for the downtown building energy transition project. And before us, it's for the first phase of the downtown building energy transition project. At the next meeting, we are looking to, for the second phase of this project, and that is to continue on with the approval of eleven point four million dollars par value taxable general obligation bonds. So there's two types of bonds that we are looking at tonight. We are looking at the capital improvement plan portion of the bonds for six point eight four million dollars. And that'll go towards the city hall portion of the project and the library portion of the project that's laid out in your memo. Excuse me. And so the capital improvement plan portion, again, is six point eight four million dollars. And on the second page of that, too, it shows the funding sources. So the city bond issuance for phase one is eleven point four million dollars. Then it goes on to show phase two. Phase two is covered by those other funding sources. So we're simply looking for issuance for the phase one. In addition to that, the five-year capital improvement plan that's before you was put together by Kennedy and Graven on our behalf. And it's not the overall city capital improvement plan. It is one that is specific to capital improvement bonds. So that's why you don't see a lot of other content in there, simply because we don't have a lot of other capital improvement bonds in there. And with that, tonight, we will hold a public hearing for the issuance of the bonds. There are a couple notable items within there. On page one, I know this often gets asked, and it's the statutory debt limit as per Minnesota State Statute four seventy-five point five three subdivision one. And as you can see down there on the bottom of page one, it's the legal debt limit and margin, which they take the estimated market value, which is eighteen point one billion dollars that we have for this, in the city of Rochester, times three percent of the legal limit. That gives us five hundred and forty-three million dollars. And as you can see with the, we currently have sixteen debt issuances out there right now. This will be, it'll be one issuance, so it'll be seventeen. And so when you combine those other two along with this one together, it will give you that twenty-three point eight eight million dollars. That's where that number comes up. But when you subtract that from the five hundred and forty-three million dollars, our legal debt margin, meaning the capacity that we have left is five hundred and nineteen million dollars, or four point six percent. So you have a lot of room to go. It's not uncommon. Obviously, you'll never get there. But anyways, I know that question often gets asked, how close are we? Well, you're at four point six percent, so you have quite a ways you can go. Or that, the other, these are CIP bonds, the other debt limit that they want to do the math on, and these are going to be twenty-year bond issuances, is the maximum annual principal and interest. So you can see that on page two. And what they do is they take that estimated market value, again, at eighteen billion dollars, and they multiply it times point one six percent, and that gives us twenty-eight point nine million dollars. But for this and for what we have, the annual issuance will only be a hundred and seven thousand dollars. And again, that's based on the eight point seven, so this will actually be lower than that. The remaining capacity is still twenty-eight point two seven million dollars. So there, you, you're only at two point five percent of the limit. So again, quite a ways to go. With that, the resolution follows that, and I believe it's all the content that we just went over. One final note to, just looking forward, on May twentieth, we'll be looking to set a sale for the tax abatement portion. So we'll be going through this process alone just for the tax abatement portion. Again, this is for the CIP portion of the project, and the total paramark amount, again, is eleven point four million dollars. With that, then Chris will be here from Baker Tilly to walk us through that. Staff will do a rating call after that, not on the twentieth, but after the twentieth. And then on June seventeenth, she'll be back. And then on June 17th, she'll be back, um, because we'll be setting the sale and awarding the bid on the sale of the bonds at that point. So with that, I can stand for any questions.
Well, we're forced to open up the public hearing. Thank you, Mr. Anderson. So now we will open up the public hearing. Would anybody from the public like to comment or ask question of staff? The public hearing is now open. Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing. So city council members, do you have any questions of staff? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
I'll move adoption of a resolution approving the capital improvement plan and preliminary approval of the issuance of capital improvement bonds, um, for the downtown building energy transition project.
We have a second?
Yeah.
Mr. Keen?
Um, yeah, again, it, one thing that I want to, I've been, should stay consistent is this is, uh, the district energy has gone through some different chip phases and different things. But early on, back in 2022, we blocked about this 11.4 million with what our tax amount was going to be for how much we were going to, uh, do for, do an HVAC for the five buildings we had. Even going through phase one of district energy and now phase two, we've kept that local number, the exact same amount. So I think that's important that we've been able to leverage that amount through things like the, uh, um, inflation reduction act and some other federal programs and we're able to do more in our city because of those, but with the same amount of contribution from our taxpayers.
Thank you, Mr. Keen. Anybody else have a comment? No, seeing none. I'll, I'll take a motion. You made it. All in favor, sing by, singify by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you very much, it passes. We now go to G3, which is utility easement vacation number C D 2024 dash zero zero two V A C by Christ Community Church. Mr. Yetser, I guess you're up.
Good evening, Mayor Norton, members of city council. Before you tonight is C D 2024 002 V A C by Christ Community Church. The property is located at 4400 55th Street Northwest. And the request is to vacate the existing 20-foot wide utility easement originally dedicated in 2003. The applicant has an approved site development plan for the, for an addition on the north side of the structure. During the site development plan review process, it was determined that an existing fire hydrant on the subject parcel would need to be relocated, also resulting in the need of relocating the utility easement. The new easement has been recorded and with this, the existing utility easement is no longer needed. I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you. He will now open up the public hearing. Would anybody like to speak on this item? The public hearing is now open. Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing. Council members, do you have questions? Does somebody want to make a motion?
I'll, I'll make a motion adopting a resolution approving utility easement vacation number C D 2024 dash 002 V A C to vacate a 20-foot wide utility easement located in the north half of section 13, township 107, range 14.
Second?
Second.
Any other comments, Mr. Keen? Mr. Wall?
Having been at the neighborhood information meeting on the project, not necessarily for the speci- uh, specific fire hydrant issue, uh, the neighborhood is, uh, very much in favor. This will be a very nice, a nice addition to, uh, our community.
Good. Any other co- um, comments? Mr. Keen?
Again, it didn't come up in the hearing, but it should be pointed out that the new easement has already been approved. Um, and so there, there's nothing needs to be moved. This is pretty straightforward and a good thing that us, that we're able to have act on it.
Okay. All in favor, sing a, singify by saying aye?
Aye.
Perfect, it passes. Nothing on reports and recommendations? We now have two items for, um, council initiative actions. Mr., um, Bransford, you're going to handle these for us. So your number, first one is grant, how grants appear on the consent agenda.
Thank you. So everyone has had a chance to read it, but what I wanted a little preamble to point out the fact that, for me, this is, um, recent events has given me an opportunity to think about, um, ways that we could uplift some of the great work that city staff has actually done with their grants. They've done a, a lot of amazing work. Um, and I really believe that it's important for the community to see that we not only, we put our money where our mouth is, where we try to keep the tax levy down and these grants are an amazing way to do that. So I just want to give a shout out to staff that, um, we do in fact, uh, uh, really try very hard to affect these, um, projects and, and in a fiscally responsible way. However, I did want to point out that I, I think it would be good, and this is just a CIA, this is just a discussion, um, that I'd like to have with the council about ways that maybe we could, um, amplify the visibility both to the community and to ourselves in case, um, we have questions, if we want to learn a little bit more about some of the details of a, of a grant. What I don't want this to become is a bit odious for staff. Uh, I don't want to politicize grants. That would be a mistake. This is simply a discussion about how we might be able to promote the grant writing that we do in the city, the benefit to the community and to get a little bit more visibility to both us and the community about that work.
Thank you. Other questions, other discussion with Mr. Bransford? How do we want to instruct staff? Mayor, you want to speak?
Yeah, I'll just start us off. Um, I understand and appreciate the idea that we want to hold up the grants that we're working on. Um, however, having been involved in some of this process, I also have concerns that the grant turnaround time often is quite short or we learn about things quite late. Um, and so if, if you're going to move ahead with this discussion, I hope you can center it around, focusing on things that might not be part of our CIP or part of our daily work as a city council, the goals that you've already set, um, so that we end up not being able to apply for grants in a timely way, um, and it's already in our plan. So if it's something that's not part of our work as a city and it's something, you know, I mean, you might want to send a dollar amount. Um, there are often many small grants, uh, for instance, that come across my desk from US Conference of Mayors or League of Minnesota Cities or other opportunities that you have several weeks to turn it around and there would be absolutely no time to be able to get it in advance of an application, that we have a way to let you know when we've applied, maybe even after the fact in a timely manner, if we do it quarterly or whatever. Um, I think that seems reasonable. I just don't want to do anything that would hurt our ability to be able to compete. And an example I'll give is sometimes we'll have a grant where they'll have given out the funds, um, in an area and then there's, they weren't all applied for and they'll send out a note, you know, last minute, if you were thinking of applying, you know, May 1st or if it's, you know, today, they might say, May 15th is the deadline. If you've got an idea, apply. And the staff have to be able to work within the scope of their work of what they're already working on and try to take advantage of those funds as they're available on a very short timeline. So I just want to throw that out there to think a little bit about what you're doing and how you might make it timely and not hurt the city's ability to get those funds.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Keen?
Um, I, I get, okay, so get this going, I'm going to make a motion to approve.
You have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Okay, now this might seem a little controversial, but I'm going to make a motion to approve, but I'm going to speak against this. Um, and I'll, I'll go through my reasons. Um, number one, I want to know what business problem we're trying to solve here. What, what's wrong with our process that we need to make these changes and that hasn't been explained? Uh, number two, the staff, in their assessment of this council initiative action, they tell us that we'll surely miss grant opportunities if we implement this complexity into our operation. I've also heard we'd need a grant administrator. We will likely try to amend the C A, uh, the council initiative action to say things like only for or whenever possible, but we will be making the processes of running the city and funding our work less efficient. Um, city operations will surely be more complicated, uh, and we won't know the dollars we missed because they just won't come up in front of us. Number three, the action communicates to our staff that we do not trust their judgment when it comes to implementing our policy and funding our, our project goals. The action tells the staff to be more careful and less creative. Um, that's the absolute last thing we want to be doing. Number four, the council initiative action in front of us should be for items that are, that come up organically or from the community or for emergencies. Init- initiatives that we should, we know we should deviate from our agreed to strategic priorities and our agreed to work plans. This does not pass that test. And lastly, I was going to say that as a pol- as a policy-focused council, um, what we are doing here is a, is, we have business controls in place that we never, this council has to approve a grant before we accept it. That's the business control in place and that's been working for us. Net, the right business controls are in place. So in summary, we don't have a problem to solve. We should not complicate local government any more than it has to be. We should find ways to free our staff to be more entrepreneurial, not the opposite. And we need, and we are pushing future grant opportunities, other com- other communities and making living in Rochester more expensive. Now, I put this motion out to start, to have this discussion, um, because I know our history is to start talking about how can we change it or morph it. Um, some of us might want to, you know, tweak it as Mayor Norton started saying, could we put some controls on it? But I'm going to warrant against that. There's a very specific council initiative action in front of us and I want us to bring that to a vote.
Comments?
Well, I'd like to comment.
Okay.
Um.
To Bransford?
Wow. Um, that was heartfelt, uh, pointed. Um, and in some instances, point well taken. I'm not married to a particular solution. My desire is like with the idea of a quarterly report. I simply would like to be able to go somewhere and see the list of grants. I suppose I could ask staff for that, but I, it would be nice to have some level of summarization. I'm not asking staff to not think creatively. I'm not wagging my finger at anyone. It's to sort of made it sound like that's the, um, the intent here and that is not the intent. I don't want to politicize. I don't want to make these grants miss deadlines. I'm simply asking for a little bit more visibility into what we're doing, the grants we've applied for, so that I can read a little bit more about them and maybe ask questions. Ironically, we have grant applications on the consent agenda this evening. Right, so it's not completely unheard of. So I don't want staff to get the wrong impression that I'm trying to make their job harder. I'm simply asking for a little bit more information so that grants, like the one recently, don't get missed until we have some more visibility into, um, that process.
Mr. Wall?
Like, like, uh, the mayor and council member Keen, I would be want to hamstring, uh, the staff in, uh, a creative impulse and finding something at the last minute that might assist us in funding important things for the city of Rochester. Um, I don't know, 50,000 came up. I don't know if that's the right threshold, uh, for, uh, the amount of money that we would want to review. Uh, we have grants every year that we simply write as a matter of course that, uh, are, are part of our really week to week and month to month, uh, operation, which, uh, I don't think, uh, deserves review of the council. They could be listed. I'm also wondering if we have any purview over grants written by RPU, Parks and Rec and Library uh, in our charter system as long as they're staying within their, uh, budget for the year. You know, I, I guess I would hope a discussion like this might, uh, help better inform staff that, uh, we as a council, if we know that there's an item that has really heavy interest on the part of the community, that those are brought to us rather than the more pedantic, uh, proposals that I would suspect make up most of our grants throughout the year. But if we know that there's going to be just a large public interest in something, uh, even controversy, that those kinds of things, uh, might do well to float through, uh, seven people, eight, nine people, uh, rather than, um, come to us after the fact.
Thank you. Other comments?
Thank you. I guess I'm hearing what everybody's saying and I, I, I tend to agree with all of it. For me, a- as someone who gets numerous listservs for grants, USDA, MDA, NCAT, ATRA, NRCS, I'm aware of all of the grants that are out there that come my way that I could take the time to fill out. And I'm assuming that staff has those coming to you as well. You know what you're going to jump at, you, you know what you're going to go for. And in speaking with Ms. Zelm's about this last week, is it, is it as simple as just simply saying during one of your staff meetings, yep, we're, we're putting in for these this week? And then it just comes in the council update that these are the grants that are being applied for this week. It's, it's something that is not onerous to staff. It's something that's not an extra work for you to do because I believe you are searching for everything that you can search for and applying for those funds that would be eligible to meet our strategic objectives. So I just want to be informed. I don't want it buried necessarily where I can't find it or something that I hear of after the fact or something that, you know, the community is up in arms about. I, I certainly want to be able to address that. So if there was an easy way, once a week, it just, you know, came out in an update, I, I'd be really happy with that, but that's not what the CIA is.
No, it's not, but.
Go ahead, Mr. Bransford.
Yeah, it's, it's not, but again, it's just a discussion, right?
Right, that, I'm just, I'm sharing, I'm sharing how I feel about the CIA and how, I appreciate the dialogue and I just want to let staff know that I appreciate everything you're doing too. And I don't, I don't want to put any parameters on what you're doing there. I just would love to see a list. Hey, these are, these are coming our way and we're going for these. It is easy as that.
Thank you. Ms. Dennis?
Well, thank you. I, I came with nothing prepared because I feel that's the important thing to do is listen and hear everyone's thoughts. So, but I, um, I admire the spirit of the CIA. I think that, looking back, and if you look back at, I believe it was, um, May, um, I'm sorry, April 4th, where I spoke about the Silver Lake issue, where when we have an amount of money that were, was granted, how can we turn that away? I mean, we, we, oh, it's so hard and it, it overrides and it, it shadows public engagement. So that amount of money is, is a huge, um, issue when we are applying for things that haven't been, uh, uh, the will of the people. So when it comes to Silver Lake, if I imagine, I'm ma- I'm assuming this might be the spark of this CIA, um, but please correct me if I'm, I'm wrong. That I agree that Silver Lake grant, um, request was not done in a proper way. So yes, I think that should have been done better, um, more transparency. Things are being done behind closed doors. I feel that we need to have the, uh, city council not minimized. We have, we have so much, um, responsibility being the, the voices of the approximately 20,000 each residents that we each represent, that we, we need to make sure we hear from the voices of the people before we make decisions. However, I also am a, a huge advocate for being a good steward of taxpayer dollars. And if we, if we, if we hold back grants, I mean, if we hold back opportunities, if we miss deadlines and deadlines, I, oh my goodness, I know. Deadlines, if anyone knows me, I'm like at the buzzer, right? Deadlines, we could miss funding that could offset property tax. And how can I go back to re- residents and say, oh, I, oh my goodness, we could have got this outside funding and saved you, um, X amount, uh, hundreds of thousands of property tax dollars because we missed. So I think this is a very complicated issue that needs to be explored. This CIA, which I feel is, uh, you know, ignited by Silver Lake situation, the Silver Lake situation definitely, like I said, um, um, was done, I don't think correctly. And I, I, I've made that clear on this dais. Um, but to tie the hands of city staff to say that you can't go after a $10,000 grant or a $20,000 grant, which adds up and the amount of grants I've heard the city staff goes after, um, adds up to incredible dollars that saves taxpayer, um, pockets but, but pockets, um, that we, I don't think it would be wise for us to say, hey, let's just rely on, you know, uh, the property tax. No, we need to rely on every avenue as we possibly can, we can to offset and, and, and help people who were struggling paycheck to paycheck paying their, their property tax. So I hope you're following me. I'm back and forth because I see both sides tremendously. Um, I came in here, what I read here, I was like, I'm supporting the CIA. I think, yes. Um, I came in here, what I read here is like, I'm supporting the CIA. I think yes, transparency is trust. We need to make sure that we, we do not, um, have decisions like we, I believe we did with Silver Lake behind closed doors, that we need to make sure taxpayers and citizens have the forefront of what, you know, like this is their city. I am just a amplifier. We're all just microphones of people's voices. I came in here to support the CIA. After looking into it and thinking, I, I, I think this might be detrimental for the future. So I like what council member Kirkpatrick said, what council member Keen said, where we have a list. I mean, I feel it's not hard. Um, we, we get a council update if you don't, if, if people don't understand, uh, how this works, every week we get a council update from the city administrator, which tells us things that we need to know for policy. We could easily have that in, into our council update, all of the grants and the big dollar grants that we could, um, you know, and maybe have a, a price amount. Because when we make our decisions, I don't make my decisions necessarily, necessarily on a small grant. I make my, like this situation where we have the Sixth Street Bridge or the, the, um, the Silver Lake, those are millions of dollars and that, those grants should never be done be without council approval before initiating. So I'm going all over. I, I can't support this CIA as written. But I do support the spirit of it and I think we should come back and have it written more, particularly with what the dollar amount with, that makes sure transparency is out there. Because I feel representational democracy is being diminished over and over again with meetings being done behind closed doors, with council not being involved with decisions. And I just want to say thank you to council member Palmer and council member Bransford for bringing the CIA because this is the essence of what we need to make sure that we, we have transparency. But the way it is written, I cannot support.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Dennis. I just want to clarify a few things that you said. Um, as far as Silver Lake goes, the, the, um, staff did follow the direction of the council and they did say, um, go ahead and try to find some grants and they, then they went out and found some grants. And I think that they need to be applauded for that. I think the assumption that this has anything to do with it, it's mis, it's in, it's, it's poor timing, I guess, on our part that, that this came up at this time. But, um, um, I, I have a feeling, my true belief that, that, uh, the staff do a very good job of informing us of what's going on. I'm not particularly sure that everybody in the community knows that. And, you know, the few of the things that I've heard here is, is I would like to see it limited, that we don't do the charter boards. I, I, I see this as informational only. Um, you know, somebody has said that we should do it on the council update. I like being it on the consent agenda or some other item that we could put it on so that the public knows about it. Because the public does not receive the council update. And so that, that was kind of the things that we talked about. Um, and so, you know, we don't want less efficient government. Nobody wants that. I, I don't believe that we want to be, um, approving them more than that we want to get notice that, that, that they've been applied for, even if it's past tense. Um, it's kind of what we had talked about. Um, so Mayor, did you want to say something?
Yeah, just quickly. I like, um, the direction of that conversation. I appreciate it. Um, I, I think, um, if it is after the fact, that gives staff the ability of something has a two or three week deadline that they don't have to slow it down. So I appreciate the direction you're going. I did want to point out, um, Mr. Bransford mentioned that there were several grants in the agenda today. And I just want to point out that that is your line of approval. You do have an opportunity to approve grants and they come before you in the consent agenda or otherwise, but I think generally in the consent agenda. And if you don't like them, you can withdraw them and have the conversation during a board meeting. So you do ultimately have the final vote on all grants.
But, and, 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 and I guess what I was looking at is information, informational items is what we, we were thinking. We're not looking that we're approving them. We're trying to stop them.
Uh, yes, I understand that. I was just trying to clarify for Mr. Bransford that they do come on the consent agenda for your approval before they become, uh, before they're accepted. So I just wanted to point that out because he, he noted that they were in there.
Mr. Keen?
Yeah, again, this is not a surprising discussion. I think you'd like any of these things uh, that generates these ideas like, is this informational? What else, what else could we do? But the fact is, there's something in front of us that specifically says, do something a certain way and pre- approval for certain things. And I think it's important that we act on that. I also think it's important, and I believe this happens when we have these discussions, the staff is listening and trying to figure out how they take actions on that. But again, the, I think Mayor Norton points out, the business controls are in place already. I mean, I find this a slide towards more, less efficient government. Um, and I'm concerned about it and that's why I'm trying to stand against it. But I also am worried that we're going to have these side discussions and say, well, it's kind of like that. Can, did you guys hear us enough? But I want to have this up down vote to make sure nobody looks back two years from now and says, the council approved this, because I want it to be known whether we approved it or not. And that's why I made the motion to act on it. And I think everyone has spoken, so I think it's time we called a question.
Can you, can, can you, um, repeat your motion for me?
My motion is to, uh, approve the council initiated action. Should speak.
Yes.
May I speak on my first?
Okay. Before it approves, I would like to amend, if I can, the council initiated action to say that the grant requests and applications be placed on the council update and a media sent memo, media memo prior, uh, to, uh, being requested, so that the public and the council at the same time has that information.
So your, your amendment to this is that the council, that this would appear on the council update in a media.
So that the public has the same knowledge.
That's your, that's your?
My amendment. Yes.
Is there a second to that? Is there a second to that? There is no second, so that amendment dies? Any other discussion? We already had our discussion?
Just, just a clarification then, uh, a vote of nay would be so that this did not, uh, go to staff for further consideration.
Okay. We'll do a roll call vote. Burke, could you help us with that?
Council member Keen?
Nay.
Council member Bransford?
Nay.
Council member Wall?
Nay.
Council member Kirkpatrick?
Nay.
Council member Dennis?
Epstein.
Council or, uh, acting council president Palmer?
Nay.
Though the motion fails and a council initiative action goes down in flames, we'll go number two. Number two is council initiation action reviewing parking requirements for snow removal for winter parking. And Mr. Bransford, what do you have to say on this one?
Oh, staff's really loving me tonight. Um.
Thank you.
This is an interesting one because it is still an issue that I get a lot of emails from every year um, when the, the snowflakes start to fall. And, um, personally, I don't have a problem with this way of doing things, but I do wish to see some metrics or, so when I get an email from a constituent and they say, well, this really stinks. I hate doing this. I'd like to be able to point to a public record or some document says, we're saving two hundred thousand dollars on this initiative. Um, so I, I guess where I'm going with this is, you know, maybe we could have a small update at a study session or just a little bit more information that I could respond to a constituent with and say, yeah, I know you don't like it, but you know, here's the savings, here's the efficiency, here's why we're doing it. And I could point to a study session or I could point at something and say, you know, go watch the video. Or I don't know if we have time in a study session to do something like that. It doesn't have to be very long. I'm sure that I believe I remember hearing that, you know, there were metrics being gathered along those lines. I'm curious if that data is available, if, in what form it's available.
So, and if I'm hearing you correctly, you'd like to have a study session on, um, um, information on the, um, snow emergence or snow ordinance. Is that right?
Yep.
Anybody else have a que- um, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, the three of us share wards that have all the little teeny core neighborhood downtown streets. A gentleman that lives a couple of blocks from me actually gets out his tape measure every winter to make sure there's enough clearance between the parked cars and the snow banks for the fire department to go through. He's a conscientious resident. So I think the three of us really get the impact of this, whereas maybe the other three council members who live out where there's wider streets don't quite feel the impact that we do with all of the emails, stop this. Or for instance, my ward, um, some of the sections that are, you know, folks are less well off. It's a real burden to get a ticket or several tickets over one season. And, um, being, having to move your car each time is, um, is difficult. I remember approving this. I think it's a really great idea to have this. I appreciated staff saying, we're going to end it early this year because we didn't have any snowfall. That, that was the right thing to do and I thank you for that. I also understand the necessity of it in the fall to get the leaves picked up as, you know, an adopt a drain person. So I, I don't know what there is around this, but I do know that benchmarking is critical in just about anything that you need to do if you want to make a decision later on. So getting data on this would be really great. But I don't think this is worthy of a CIA. I, I think instead we want to direct staff to gather some benchmarking and this might be something that we do, um, with our strategic initiatives, making sure that we do this. Also, I think we just put this in three years ago and we haven't had much snow the last couple of years and maybe it's premature. Maybe we're going to get a lot of snowfall in the next couple of years. I don't know.
Ms. Zelms, can we put this on a study session?
Look, council president Palmer, I think that really depends on action of the city council. Of course, if you request a study session, we will make sure that that happens. There's openings in June and July is pretty clear.
Okay.
So, but it really depends on the action of the council.
Other, other council members, Mr. Keen?
Well, again, there's a, there's a submitted council initiated action. I'd like to move approval on it and then speak to it.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Go ahead, Mr. Keen.
All right. Again, I, I motioned to approve this, but I do it so that we get to a vote and we get a vote as, as it's turned in, not as we amend it and adjudge it and, and, and just talk about it. Um, I, I feel really strongly against this one. Um, but, but part of this is that I'm concerned about the council initiated actions being misused to bring like these sort of individual personal concerns. I don't want to speak really for or against the parking process here. It's sort of like how we're going to use council initiated actions. If, um, uh, if, if we have our meetings in the spring where we talk about what are our strategic priorities? Uh, what are the projects we're trying to do? And I think it would be fine if enough of us said, we need to do a review of this through the year. But to do it through the council initiated action feels wrong to me. It feels like we're misusing a process that we put in place to respond proactively when some emergency happens in the community or when something happens that we clearly missed on, on our strategic priorities and we need to change staff's direction. In this case, there's just lingering feelings that this isn't the right process, even though it has been approved by the full council. And now we're here debating it again because council member Palmer continues to bring council initiated actions. And in my way, he's manipulating our agenda to get his topics onto the agenda by using council initiated actions. I tell you what really scares me about this is if, if I were a staff member and I see the council passing this and saying, you come back and justify to me what you're doing after we've told them to do it. I think pretty soon they're going to kind of get maze bright and say, I'm not going to do this. This is silly. They're telling me not to do it. And then what ends up happening is the will of the council is overrode by one person putting in council initiated actions. And that's what I don't want to see. Uh, so in summary, uh, I, I support the, uh, the policy priorities that we've worked out through the right processes, not through council initiated actions. I reject the special treatment of policies that council member Palmer disagrees on. And I, again, I'll, I'll vote against this council in action. Um, but part of it is, I, I watch what's going to happen. We're going to vote, maybe improve this because we do have some questions about it. But make sure you know what you're approving. Are you approving, let's look into this more? Or the specific thing in this talked about, you come back and justify to me what you're doing. You, the council is telling the staff that we told you to do this, but you justified to me. And if you can't come up with suggestions that are improvements, it implies that we shouldn't be doing it. And I did not hear that when we did, when we set this as part of our, set the policy in place, adjusted it a year later. And as council member Kirkpatrick says, we haven't had a test of it because we haven't had the bad snow winters. Um, talk about the core neighborhoods. This is where this is really for. This is where we used to bang cars with our plows. Yeah. Council member Palmer and I were the only ones on council in February of twenty, twenty, February twenty nineteen, when our snow plows could not get through anymore because the, we had the three bad snows where our garbage trucks quit working for, did, did not go out for two weeks in a row because they couldn't get through the streets. And it's mostly in those core neighborhoods where the streets are smaller. That's where the benefit from this comes from. And yet here we are talking about, well, we're, we're not really looking at it as a policy. We're just saying like, people don't like this. And then setting policy based on that. I think that's weak. Um, again, I put this as a motion on the table because I want to deal with it as a vote. I know we'll talk about it and say, we could do it slightly different. But the fact is, we want to communicate that this came up and it was rejected. And then we can have that discussion of, but we need to look at these things in the future. And I think that comes up through our strategic priority discussions and not through council initiated actions.
Thank you, Mr. Keen. Mr. Wall?
So I'd, I simply like to ask Mr. Keen, uh, and you drove at it right at the end of what you were saying, that this needs to be a, a strategic initiative. Boy, the seem, this seems to me to be a very small issue for a strategic initiative. Instead, this seems like a, a, a pretty small policy in the rank of city policies. If we're not in a strategic initiative discussion, where would we have this kind of discussion to, uh, try and pull together policymakers and staff so that we, uh, can improve a policy?
Thank you, Mr. Wall. Let's see here. Um, Ms. Dennis?
Oh. Thank you so much. So I, I have to just clarify, one, I, I truly believe any input that we get from residents is merit enough to bring this to the council. So I think that if people are complaining about the parking and the snow removal, we should bring it to city council. That is our job. So I think I, just to comment on council member Keen and on council member Kirkpatrick, Ward Six and all the other wards, I think all have the same issue. So yes, downtown has a lot of parking issues, but there are people struggling in Ward Six and who get the parking tickets because they had, they, there's many reasons why, but, um, this is a huge issue in Ward Six as well. So I just want to throw that out, not to have assumption that it's just downtown that has parking issues with snow. Um, I, I have to say, I agree on both, like, I, I like to come in with an open mind. But what has now been dictated under our, our city council, uh, rules and procedures, that if any question comes to us, that we have to ask staff to spend more than thirty minutes? Thirty minutes. I asked an IT question about security data breaches and I was told that that was going to take.
Point of order?
No, it's important. That's why.
No, no, point of order, but.
It seems to me that we're strained from the CIA when we're talking.
This is all about CIA's, the merit of CIA's.
Council member Dennis?
To this particular.
It is. Okay. I'm so sorry. So sorry. I do squirrel a little bit. Apologize. But I, but under our council rules and procedures that I did not have a say in, but that was voted on council, that if it takes more than thirty minutes, we have to go under CIA. We can't go and ask a question. I can't call up and say, hey, can you look into this, you know, boulevard tree or pothole? I have to get a CIA from my colleagues to have any staff time more than thirty minutes. If I am mistaken, please correct me. But this takes more than thirty minutes, so it merits a CIA. So unfortunately, my colleagues have, uh, voted to make that any question whatsoever that merits more than thirty minutes of staff time has to be done in the process that council member Palmer and council member Bransford did. So I unfortunately have to, even though I, I should say unfortunately, I don't know if I agree or disagree. But I do agree that this was the means that now has to be done by our hands being tied, not being able to even ask a question of staff. So I just wanted to throw that out there. We have to vote, I believe, per our own decisions that we have to allow the CIA to go through so that it can have a discussion of staff and of council because it obviously takes more than, you know, twenty-nine minutes. So I have to vote for it.
This is part of our, our pol- policy that we have for CIA's and this is a discussion that we're going to have. Mr. Kirkpatrick, you have something to say?
Actually, I have a question for staff. Thank you. Would you have enough data since we approved this and then changed it to even give us a study session? And if, and if you do have enough data, when might be the best time to do that? Somebody has said there's room in June, but does it need to happen in June? I'm just wondering what staff thinks would be the best time to bring this forward.
Ms. Zelms?
Uh, thank you. Maybe I'll start and then if there needs to be any follow-up, um, Mr. D Meyer could share. But I think the challenge is that most of the benchmarks that we would have for something like this are qualitative and not quantitative.
like this are qualitative and not quantitative data. We do have information about how, from, from when this was implemented, about the fewer numbers, there's a number of significant fewer times that staff needs to go around and widen streets. So there is actual dollar savings for that. As to whether or not it needs to be at a specific time or even on a study session, rather than as an update in, say, a council update on a Friday about, these were, like, historically the reasons for going forward with this, this is generally what the savings is. That's an option, and you always have the option on your study session calendar item on each study session, that if someone wanted to request this to come forward, you could request it on the study session calendar item that happens on every study session. So just for clarity, there's always that option as well. But I would suggest that maybe Mr. Niemeyer, if there's, you have anything else to add?
You covered it pretty well, Allison. I would just add that along those qualitative metrics, we have a lot of feedback from our street maintenance staff on how much this helps, the services that we deliver to the community. A big part of this is just the public safety component. I've talked to our friends in the fire department, and, you know, as much as garbage trucks, getting fire trucks through, not just our plows, is a big consideration for them in the winter, and if we do have those heavy snowfalls and busy winters, it becomes a factor, so.
Okay. Ms. Patrick?
Thanks.
So, one of the other pieces to this that I guess is important for me, and maybe both Palmer and Bransford have heard this, but I've actually gotten constituent concerns expressed that the trucks are supposed to be going down one side on a particular day, but the driver actually does both, and then, you know, collecting leaves on both sides if they happen to all fall down, or you end up snowing somebody in with the big, you know, get out there with your shovel and shovel yourself out, putting the bank around the car. So, I think that information would be important to hear also, or to get back from your driver saying, yeah, I went down both sides today because it looked like it needed it. Because technically, maybe you're not supposed to be going down both sides, right? If, if we're supposed to park on an even side because it's an even day so that they can clear the odd side, nobody should be getting snowed in by a plow when they park on the correct designated side.
Thank you, Councilmember. I would say that's generally correct, and if we're seeing that operation out in the community, that's probably some feedback Public Works should get, and we correct that issue.
Thank you. Mayor, did you have a comment?
I was going to ask the administrator to talk about what other ways the council could put something on a study session agenda, but she answered it, I think, and it does seem to me that would be the appropriate way to handle this, and we have an easy way to do that. I hope we do that instead of a CIA.
Mr. Wall? Mr. Wall?
I would like a shout out to the snowplow operators and public works people, because I, I don't know, your guys' memories, not of this last snowless winter, but of the previous one, twenty-two, twenty-three was horrible with ice. I live on a private street, and we residents have to pay to keep it up, and I couldn't wait to get to the city streets that were relatively clear compared to our ice holes that existed for a whole winter. So, you know, I, I think we probably do have some data, at least from twenty-two, twenty-three, which I recall being just an awful winter for heavy slushy icy snow, probably two weeks after Christmas.
I, I agree with you. Public Works has a phenomenally good job in Rochester, has done a great job on their, on their snowplowing, and that's not the comment that we're trying to make. Mr. Keen?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm going back, Councilmember Wall asked about, like, where is the right location for this, and it, it's a good question. I don't have a, you know, a straightforward answer. I, I want to do two things with this, though. One is, there are things like, and I, I know I've struggled with this, we go into our, February and March, like, talking about our strategic priorities, is how do we deal with the operational things versus those big projects like sales tax things and that? And it, it is something that sort of bothers me on, on, on council, that how little time we spend with the operations of the city compared to the next development or the future land use things, and it's bothersome, it's also understandable. That's really what we're here for, setting more on policy. But it is something that bothers me with this, and it, clearly, it is one of these things that's a little controversial. But I don't think this is one of those topics that we should, like, really go based on, people don't like it, because this idea of running Public Works and running these trucks and getting our streets cleaned, that is not just a matter of, like, keeping the person happy that loses their parking spot, it's making sure we have less bang dang dings up and, like, expenses with our, our plows hitting cars, with our, not getting our streets clear enough that other sort of accidents happen. These are the things we're trying to present from. As is our method up on this council, we are talking around what the council-initiated action is. It very specifically says, provide the council with metrics that support the efficacy of the winter parking requirements and options to improve winter parking in time for next season. I, I don't know how you guys read this, but I think it's a challenge that we shouldn't be doing it. That's how I read this, and that's when I, that's what makes me fight against it. Now, we can talk about doing study sessions, we can do that, but I want to deal with this as it came to us, and I, I hope the council will say, no, we don't want to do that based on a council-initiated action, and I, I hope we can get to that clean vote.
Thank you, Mr. Keen, Mr. Bill, um, Bransford?
Well, one thing that I've learned up here is that I listen, and I at times can leave here with my tail between my legs, and that is one of those, I, I think you're right in terms of CIA's being too prescriptive, and I think these probably were. My intent was, as Kelly Kirkpatrick said, is it's benchmarking, what's the data? I think it is a little overly prescriptive. I didn't mean to start off a big brouhaha. It's really more an intent of, you know, getting the data, benchmarking, making sure that, you know, it, and I'm absolutely sure it is doing what it is meant to do, but, you know, it, it's not just because people say I don't like it, right? You get an email from a constituent, multiple constituents, and I don't necessarily have the data to provide and say X, Y, Z, you know, so that's really the impetus for this, is just, you know, give me a little bit more data to share back with people that write me and say, I don't, I don't like it is fine, but allow me to give them a little bit more data, qualitative or quantitative, such that I can explain to a cohort of citizens why this is a good idea. And I'm more than happy to write back to a constituent and say, sorry, here's why we're doing it, and here's the data to support that. CIA, too prescriptive, totally agree.
Thank you. We'll call the questions. So, Mr. Keen, do you want to repeat your motion?
My motion is to approve the council-initiated action, and my, my direction is to vote nay against it and get it on record.
Didn't ask that, I just asked-
Yep, I know what you asked, I know what you asked, and I-
Asked for your motion. We have rules, we're going to follow our rules. All in favor, sing five by saying aye? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
That four?
Three.
Okay, opposed?
Nay.
That's three to two, it passes. Thank you. Three to two, so.
Mr. President?
Yes?
We should discuss that. There, there were six people present, you need four for the motion to pass.
Don't you need a majority of voting?
You need a majority of the individuals who were part of the conversation, part of the quorum.
Clerk, could you do a roll call for us, please?
Certainly. Councilmember Keen?
Nay.
Councilmember Bransford?
Aye.
Councilmember Wall?
Aye.
Councilmember Kirkpatrick?
Nay.
Councilmember Dennis?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye. Motion passes, thank you. Next on our agenda is the ordinance first readings. Mr. Spindler-Craig, please walk us through the ordinance readings J-1 through J-5.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilmembers, Mayor Norton, there are five first readings this evening. You will recognize them as all being from the historic preservation discussions from days past. Item J-1, an ordinance designating Soldiers Field Memorial Park, a historic landmark site, removing Soldiers Field Memorial Park from the historic inventory list and amending the official zoning map as referenced in sixty point two zero zero point zero two zero A of the Unified Development Code of the City of Rochester. Moving on to item J-2, an ordinance designating the Downtown Commercial Historic District, a historic landmark district, removing the downtown district properties from the historic inventory list and amending the official zoning map as referenced in sixty point two zero zero point zero two zero A of the Unified Development Code of the City of Rochester. Item J-3, an ordinance designating part of Silver Lake Park located north of Seventh Street Northeast as a historic landmark site, removing Silver Lake Park from the historic inventory list and amending the official zoning map as referenced in sixty point two zero zero point zero two zero A of the Unified Development Code of the City of Rochester. Item J-4, an ordinance designating the Edward and Lydia Rosnell family residence, a historic landmark site, and amending the official zoning map as referenced in sixty point two zero zero point zero two zero A of the Unified Development Code of the City of Rochester. Item J-5, an ordinance designating Reed, Murdock, and Company, Libby McNeil, and Libby Seneca Foods, Cannon Company Water Tower, AKA Ear of Corn Water Tower, a historic landmark structure, removing the Ear of Corn Water Tower from the historic inventory list and amending the official zoning map as referenced in sixty point two zero zero point zero two zero A of the Unified Development Code of the City of Rochester.
Thank you, Mr. Spindler-Craig. Next is our ordinance, the second reading, we have only one today.
Item K-1, an ordinance rezoning approximately one point two five acres of land from R-1, mixed single-family, to R-2, single-family, small lot, and amending ordinance number four four seven eight, known as the Unified Development Code of the City of Rochester, Minnesota.
Move approval, second?
All in favor, sing five by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Perfect, no other items? See here, we have table items, none other business. I have Mr. Bransford.
President Palmer, would we, could we take a quick, like, I know it's right at the board, a break before the other business, in case it goes?
Sure, let's take a break, we'll be back, we're going to be, we're going to be back at seven thirty-five.
Thank you.[1325.65]
Thank you.
Mr. King?
Again, I, I, again, I think I know where we're going with this and I, I'm not disagreeable, but I, I don't think it's explained in the diocese well enough what we're talking about. I think there's some insider knowledge here because I'm not following the dollar amounts.
Okay, um, the, I'll, um, give you my two cents worth. What I think is happening here is, um, we have a second, uh, warming shelter and we have Catholic charities who, um, would like to run that, but we're gonna be running out of funding. Um, we don't want to be the only ones funding it as seen the city, but we like to be the backstop so that we can guarantee that we will have a, enough places for people to stay in our second warming shelter. Um, in moving ahead, we don't know the dollar amount, um, but we didn't want to bring it to the city council or, or have the city staff do something without us, um, kind of saying, yes, we'd like it to come, um, forward to us. Is, is ma- mayor?
Um, that generally is the direction that we headed. We were looking at about fifteen hundred dollars a month for rent. Um, the discussion at the table today was rather than keep coming back every few months to ask for more, that we look through twenty twenty five and that the city could, um, lead on just that portion of it and that the community, the business community, the nonprofit community, the city and county and others will do a campaign to raise the remainder that Catholic charities will need to provide staffing. And the good news, as far as I was concerned, is they also agreed to start using volunteers again. We have so many people in this community been asking us, what can I do? What can I do? And the warming shelter because of COVID and at, at that time had stopped using volunteers and they're going to, um, look at using volunteers again. So that will help the community be able to not only provide the funding to keep it going for the staffing, but also to be able to volunteer.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions?
I, I just wanna do a kind of a clarifying statement and see if I have it right. There's funding gaps for the, um, overflow shelter and, um, we're, we're having a discussion here about are we all okay with the city stepping up through contingency to cover the rent gap, which is probably around thirty thousand dollars? And then the community is off trying to solve another, what I thought was in the range of one hundred, one hundred and forty thousand or so. And that's in flight. Uh, do you think I have the, the thing that we, is that kind of the consensus where we're at?
Ms. Elms?
Yes, however, that wouldn't be, we, we wouldn't actually approve the contingency this evening. Something would come back to the city council with a final number based on clarifying conversation with Catholic charities to understand what that rent number is.
Good, good. That, that's, again, I wanted to just clarify it off that there's parts of this for the city, but there's parts of this, the mayor held a, an operational meeting today and kind of looked for the community, the business community, the downtown community, the faith community and what parts they're going to pick up on this. And I, again, I'm good with that. And I, and I would, I, I like the idea of like, we're not making any commitments today, but if this came back through, um, at our next meeting, I would, I would understand what it is.
Perfect. Fitzpatrick?
Thank you, Mr. Pilgrim. Um. His name too. That's fine. Um. Councilmember Kirkpatrick, I think your hand is resting on your mute button and unmuting you, unmuting you. Cool. Thank you. Um. Who is the warming, who, who is Catholic charities paying rent to? Typically the, the Fourth Street location or is it also rent to the Salvation Army?
Salvation Army. That's what we, that's the only thing we're asking for. That's the only thing we're asking for is for the Salvation Army. They have funding for the warming shelter. They need it for the Salvation Army, for the overflow.
But the Salvation Army already has a building. Why is somebody paying rent to it for it to be an empty building to be utilized?
Councilmember Kirkpatrick, I could make the assumption that there's a cost of operating the building that when it isn't being utilized in a more overnight, I mean, it typically probably wouldn't be open overnight. So there's, it's not uncommon to have like utilities and certain other maintenance and other charges that would be considered common area maintenance, things of that nature. So I, I don't know that for sure, but I would imagine it's to make sure that they're covering their costs of what they hadn't budgeted for.
Thank you.
Got it. Thanks.
Is there any objections? I don't see any. Um, thank you. Is that good enough? Mayor, you're happy? Perfect. Ms. Elms, you understand?
I understand.
Perfect. So I believe the next person would be Ms. Dennis.
Thank you so much. So I have a few items. I'll just kind of go through them real quick. I, I, um, I'm gonna skip through a few. Hopefully they'll get, although my meetings with the city administrator and, uh, others have been canceled, I will try to get them answered. So I'm gonna jump no more may. There was questions with residents, why not more parks? I listed out the, they're, they're on the city council, I'm sorry, the city website, the parks, but if we are really invested in no more may, why isn't the parks doing more parks? That's a question I just wanna throw out there. Um, there also the Earth Fest, which we had someone come speak today about that. I attended the Earth Fest. I saw Councilmember Keen and, um, Commissioner Petulki Smith, um, who were there, but, uh, I feel like more council members and more representatives would have been beneficial. I think this is an incredible.
Ms. Dennis, that's an opinion. Let's, let's move on to facts. Okay? You don't need to take attendance at a meetings. Okay?
Duly noted.
Okay, let's move on.
Meetings, Councilmember Palmer.
Let's move on.
Our opinions. Thank you. Um, I'll move with the mayor. I, I'm very appreciative. The last few years you've done paper copies. I know that's very difficult. I had a conversation with you a couple of years ago about that tech being difficult for people who are neurodivergent seniors, people who have, uh, limited access to tech. So I appreciate that, um, accommodation after our discussion a couple of years ago. So I wanna thank that. Um, I won't, I skip over some of the things that Councilmember Bransford has mentioned. I do want to note that, uh, the council rules and procedures, as we mentioned, has been very, um, clearly defined, uh, that any single item that is more than thirty minutes uh, question needs to go through a CIA. And so I have not seen a lot of CIAs for boulevard trees and, uh, potholes. So I'm assuming that there has not been any of those questions from constituents within the last six months or so. Um, I just feel this policy, if, if done universally, not just targeted to specific council members, would merit that some council members perhaps are not doing CIAs in accordance to the council rules and procedures. So if just to, um, it was laid out in an email, every single question of staff that requires more than thirty minutes of their time, if you re- ask them about a, um, something to look into, any issue in your community, uh, in your ward, in our community, needs to have a CIA done. And if it hasn't, that's a violation of our council rules and procedures. So I just want to let that note of staff so that that can be brought to council attention. Um, because I, I'm, I feel that I have brought up issues, questions. I believe there's a data issue. Um, a data potential breach, potential tech issue where, um, emails on my work issued computer have been, there've been some issues. I've been asking questions about where uh, this, um, who has access? And by me asking who has access to our work email, uh, couns- um, the city administrator said it's over thirty minutes of staff time to answer that question. So I have to go through a CIA. But I, I noticed that back in December of twenty two, you know, there was a data breach of the library where there was, uh, correct, please correct me if I'm wrong, but, uh, library cards, there's some, there was some, um, data breach of information of that. This is a real issue and I feel for us to have to go through and jump through hoops to get basic, um, information, you know, and, and, um, ask questions of IT, whether or not our city emails have been accessed from outside sources should not require a CIA. I believe that should be a basic government security issue. So I just want to, um, bring that to attention that that is being required. So I, I asked Councilmember Kirkpatrick if she would do a CIA with, CIA with me. Her answer was, I do not feel comfortable doing a CIA with you um, due to, uh, things that are happening.
Ms. Dennis, Ms. Dennis.
So if I'm not able to do a CIA, how can I get that information?
Right now.
I'm asking how I can get information if I cannot do a CIA with council members.
We, we don't need to ask who we did and didn't talk to. And second of all, our, our rules or regulations set it out for our CIAs. And so we all voted for those. Those are our rules.
I haven't, I did not.
You did not, you did.
I, no, I did not.
You may voted, you may voted against it, but it was brought to us at attention. We've had updated them since you've been on the council. So.
Clarification, I had not, I was not able to even speak on the motion. If you go back to that council member meeting, I asked questions and I did not have a moment to speak on that issue. So I had no say on that decision.
Ms. Dennis, we act as a whole. We voted on it as a whole. Those are our rules that we've been, I, I have. Ms. Dennis, I have been asked many different times, I've asked for information and been said do a CIA and I've done CIAs to do it. So that, that is what we all do. So let's get to your next question.
Okay, so I, I'm asking who can do a CIA with me to see if our government's data emails have been breached?
First of all, we have IT people who look at everything.
I cannot, I, I requested that already.
Well, you, we, we have security for IT. It's not an item that we're gonna bring up. And if there's a, a question, we will be informed that there was a breach.
I have an email. I would, I would be happy if one could share with you.
We have not, we have not had any information on that. So let's move on. What's your next question?
This is a legitimate security issue for our, our community.
It is, if it is a legitimate one, our IT department will take care of it.
They will not. I was, I was told I have to do the CIA.
Then I'm gonna make the assumption it's not. Let's move on. What's our next?
Your assumption is incorrect.
That's fine. Move on. Do you have anything else?
For the record of the data, um, security breach has not been able to be addressed.
Miss Dennis, we're dropping this subject right now. What's the next one?
I believe data security is an important issue for our citizens.
And everybody sitting here does. And we have, have a department that works very, very hard and it's a huge security issue for everybody. So let's move on to a different subject or our lives are gonna.
Acting, acting president, how would you recommend me getting an answer to this if the staff will not answer me without a CIA?
Um, I'm going to make the assumption that it, that it's been handled.
Well, the assumption is incorrect. I'm asking a clear question. How do I get this answered without a CIA?
We're moving on. Okay? Do you have anything else or do you wanna have an adjournment? Okay, do we?
I, I know, I, I will move on just to note that I was silenced during this, uh, important, uh, data security question.
And, and that is correct.
Which why I will have to probably go outside of Rochester to have address as I have.
Miss Dennis, this will on. Do you have another item or not?
I do not appreciate being scolded. I did ask for an official state audit of our, our department. So hopefully that will be done. Um, I also am asking for more transparency with that, that, that if our emails and if our data, I'm all about. Anyone wants an email, I'll share that.
We're not moving ahead. So let's, let's, we're gonna move ahead then. Okay?
This is, this is exactly why we need a president who does not.
Okay. Does anybody else, does anybody else have any other information or any other comments? Do we have a motion to adjourn? So move. Do I have a second? All in favor of signify by saying aye? Opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes.